I am calling to order the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee, School Committee number 1,675, Thursday, October 25th, 2024 at 6:03 PM. Okay. First thing we have minutes. Do we have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Art. We have a second.
Okay.
Nancy, second. Any comments? All right, seeing none, let's start. Stephanie?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
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 Nancy.
Yes.
And Kim. Kim. Kim, you're muted.
Yeah.
Kim, unmute you. Oh, okay. Hi. All right, well, we have. Kim, could you? Um. Just to vote on.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Vote on the minutes.
I can't hear you.
You can.
Speak up.
There we go, I can hear you now.
Okay. Um, a vote on the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, and you. Kyle, you just came in, did you have a chance to look?
Uh, I did not.
Okay, so, I'm standing, all right, and I vote yes. All right, we have the school committee. Minutes taking care of, um, do we have any correspondence?
I don't know who's that.
Okay. Enrollment report.
The enrollment report, the end of the week is two, three. Sixteen, yeah, two C today. And, uh, so our 10-1 number is 602 students.
Any questions for them? Okay. Anything that you're seeing or speaking to students?
I think it's very well said.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, it's the same discussion that we had, there's bad practice.
Official thing.
Right. Just based on having new needs and more people involved in the work, so.
But I think it's true, I think it's fairly studied for quite a while. Okay. Okay, student representative report.
Hi, my name is Marion Schoolmaker. I am the class representative for sophomores. Um, elections are over for both middle and high school. The middle school is very excited about nominations and are very excited. They've finished both voting and speeches, and they vote elections in all the classroom. Class, um, they've all been elected. Um, same for high school. As far as fundraising goes, for seniors, they are doing butter breads, which are finishing this week. And for sophomores, we are doing Saturday morning soccer. We were selling apple cider donuts and apple cider vinegar for the elementary soccer players. Um, next week is Spirit Week. On Monday, it'll be PJ Day. Tuesday is Anything But a Backpack Day. Wednesday is Pink for Breast Cancer Awareness. Thursday is Costume Day, and Friday is Blue Clothing.
Thank you. Any questions?
For representative?
Would you rather play costume?
Okay, student spotlight.
Mr. Miller, are we going to do student spotlight?
We are.
Okay.
Zero.
I'm going to be excited about that.
Okay, so, before we do student spotlight, I'm going to recreate the magic here. Every single classroom in the district received one of these late last night. Um, and then, these are, some of you will recognize through the book club, um, boxes, that anyone who was previously a part of this class at book clubs receive as a subscription or paid-for service. However, due to your generosity and our solicitations, we now are providing 10 books to every school student throughout the year, 500 of your full free. So, this morning, every single classroom had an opportunity to sell, sell every one. We brought a box around yesterday, so they'll be seen as well. Um, had the opportunity, uh, you know, it was like, um, uh, a surprise holiday when the book was put in each room. We had students from the high school document, they took some photos, in terms of videos. Um, and Kenzie Field was able to visit us for this. And this was the first of five of our unboxed days, as we like to call it. And the excitement around school was.
Can you, or pictures? Will you mention the specific photo?
Yeah, so, okay, this is the United States of Readers program, which I'll touch on later with our strategy for improvement.
Can I get to the video?
Oh. So, this is a decorative classroom, you can just do the slideshow. Now, these books, all the kids will be able to take home. Right? And so, these aren't part of their classroom library, these are for kids present in libraries. What was their reaction? I mean, they were thrilled. And, uh, you know, the teachers placed the orders about two weeks ago. And in the lifespan, uh, the attention span of an elementary student, they had forgotten about it. So, it was almost like a gift that they didn't realize this stuff.
That's good.
And Kenzie even, uh, we have one student who had joined our district after the book orders had gone through, and she made the effort to bring in additional 10 books for that kid to choose to, so now it was off now.
That's good.
Yeah. And this coincided with last week, um, was our, uh, school book fair. We're going to do one in the spring as well. Um, and the feedback from that was it was terrific, I mean. Uh, picture of the town. Anything that gets kids excited about reading, um, something of the sense of. After, um, the shooting, it wasn't so, the teachers gave students an opportunity to cheer, as in, uh, drop anything and read. So. And so, next week, um, we will have our United States of Reader, all schools gathering, or all elementary students will be in the gym. And we have an opera visit, um, and I'm sure Dr. Rick will talk more about that. But thank you for helping support this, appreciate it.
You're more than welcome. Thank you for.
We love you, you know, it's like, yeah, you're welcome, right? So. I'm sorry. Sorry, we got to mention one other thing. Um, we also coordinated this with our Guest Reader Week, um, which was this past week. Um, and some of our admin team and parents, uh, came in, and each class now has a guest reader from the wrestling gear. So, that's been hugely successful. Something you were in this group.
Do you still have any open slots?
No, we're not, I mean, we actually had, we had a waitlist. I think all the publicity about the United States of Readers and so on really helped. So, this year, it was, uh, it's been overwhelming, uh, among the key guest readers.
Thank you. Right? Um, we now have public comment. Do we have any public comment? Right, Stephanie, just identify yourself when you come up in your town.
First of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, my name is Stephanie Blumenthal. I'm from Sheffield.
Just so I don't make sure it's picking up, why picking her up?
I can bring that.
Yeah, you're picking her up. Do you want me to start over again?
Sure.
Please. Okay. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Stephanie Blumenthal. I live in Sheffield, Mass. Um, I'm the founder of Sheffield Saves, which is an environmental, a volunteer environmental group. His mission is reducing waste. Among our accomplishments are organizing an annual repair workshop, creation of an art supply, art supply swap cabinet in the Burschnell Sage Library, ongoing roadside cleanups, informational columns on reuse, refuse, and recycle in the Berkshire Edge and Sheffield Times, speaker programs which provide attendees with information on home winterizing, composting, and other environmental issues. Also, the screening of the documentary, We Are All Plastic People Now, at the Triplex. In 2019, we started working with Jeremy Wells and a few teachers who are no longer teaching at the school to see if composting would be viable for Mount Everett. COVID put an abrupt halt to our communication. Since COVID has quieted down, do I dare say that? Um, but we'd like to resume our conversation. Sheffield Saves would like to be a resource for the school by researching affordable and practical methods and becoming more sustainable. Aside from suggesting ideas, we would research the cost, money saved, grants available, what other local schools are doing, and help implement the programs. These changes can not only save schools money, but also slow down climate change. Recycling, sustainability, and climate change are buzzwords for the youth today. There are several organizations out there that work with schools in becoming more sustainable. They're a great source of information. We thought a walk around the school to see what the school has already in place in terms of existing waste reduction programs would be beneficial. Would that be possible? After the tour, we would like to meet with you to discuss how we might help with existing programs and present our ideas for new programs. Um, a few of our ideas, but these might be already in place. The cafeteria, how to use less plastic, signage and bins for recycling around the school, composting, plastic-free home lunches, bento boxes, reusable cup and utensils, and student involvement, to see if there is an environmental club already in place. So, thank you.
Very much. As I mentioned to you, we don't go out and pour a vote public speak, but I mentioned in my email, the normal procedure now is this will be referred to a subcommittee, and, um, that would be the Buildings, Brands, and Technologies Subcommittee. Uh, some of the things, as you mentioned, we are already doing, but this sounds like something, you know, that we want to look into further. So, we have your contact information, and we'll, uh, in case you don't know, Art Pataki is the chair of that Subcommittee.
So, you do have my contact?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much again.
You're welcome. Thank you for taking the time. Any other public comment? Okay. Let's move on to the students' managers' report.
My name is Ann.
Uh, we're going to give a question this evening, uh, seeking your approval regarding the cost of health insurance grant. Again, whether it's in the payroll or.
If you go past, right past the enrollment report.
It's on the backside of the enrollment.
Efficiency.
Okay. Um, I will take a motion to approve the warrant report.
Sort of. Motion to approve the warrant.
That's Nancy, you just did that, Art, so I'll take you as the second. Um, any questions? Uh, do you know what your, that this party, how much the help has gone up? Or are they in negotiation now?
No, we present how much the health insurance does as part of the budget.
Right.
So, I think we are right in the 7% or 8% range, or maybe. Unless Marty, do you know, off the top?
Um, I was at a meeting last week, and they had talked about, uh, the increase of the insurance. They just talked about the retirees, the increase, uh, what the retirees might be seeing.
Right, but that's that 426 stuff, I'm saying, this, this is, uh, we, we were, I think we slated about 8%, that is the increase.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty.
Any other? Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. I'm going to start over here with Mr. Edlemont.
How come he's not Mr. Edlemont?
Two. And this is the third party.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, Art?
Yes.
Yes. Just Edlemont, yes.
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 Okay, and I'm a yes, so we have approval for our.
Yeah.
Oh, Kim, please. Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You are welcome.
Okay, so, I also under, um, Gibson and Grant's.
Yes.
So, there is, uh, I wanted to acknowledge, and it's on six C, intact it. Um, as you know, um, uh, the presentation last year from the Pick, the Playground Improvement Committee, um, they had, uh, petitioned, uh, administration and the school committee for upgrades of playground. Um, and you can see here, we have a lovely note from, um, the Underground Elementary PTO. Uh, and they have given, um, submitted a, uh, $5,500 donation for, uh, the slide portion of the.
Oh, lovely.
Yes, and the note that, um, the cost was around, um, 11,000. So, um, we, I think we should, should, um, accept this and, uh, send thank you to.
That's great.
All right, I will take a motion to that effect. So, okay, so, all right. So, the motion is to accept the gift and to send an acknowledgement, um, on behalf of the school committee and district administration. Okay, any discussion?
I also just wanted to know that this is, they're playing fundraisers for the second half, so they are going to contribute 11,000 hopefully to, towards this project, so.
Wow.
They're very, very grateful.
Wow. Remember the cookie wall, all those cookies.
All right, then.
Great, then. Uh, great. That's all right, that's it, so let's start, Jim?
Yes.
Miss Mother.
Yes. Okay, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and Kim?
Well, I'm ready.
Thank you, Mrs. Mother.
That's Ms. Mother.
Oh, absolutely, yes. All right, were there any other town business? Okay. Um, my chairman's report will be brief. First, thank you to all of those people who came for Candidates Night. Um, I, I think it's, that is, uh, starting something that we will continue. I love, I don't know how others who they have felt that the students basically ran it. They were very well prepared. Um, we responded to initiative that originally came from the clerks. I mean, Phyllis Seachy is in Sheffield was the first one who brought it to my attention after the last election. People know they're supposed to vote for all five towns, but they don't know any one. And, um, she was apologetic. I said, don't be apologetic, it's something we need to address. But then, we, in addition, that's, uh, superintendent's roundtable brought it up again. And I think this was a wonderful way to handle with, um, Mr. Carpenter and the man of the students, middle school and high school. To the beautiful job, and Miguel Nez, I said, even in my article, it's a shame that more people did not come, and we have to figure out, you know, why, because they definitely, you know, would have benefited. Um, and I thank you, you know, those of you there, Stephanie, you got part between the rock and a hard place, and point and all that, but, but very straightforward approach, and, you know, for each, for Kyle, Art, for all of the Jim, you know, we weren't running Jim and I till, we have two more years. But the fact that we had that kind of straightforward approach from all of the school committee members, potential school committee members, including Miguel Mayer, who is running for a write-in in, um, New Marlboro, is, it was positive, and after all this time, I finally got people's vibes. So, I think it was great that we had that little packet, and we talked about putting that on our website along with the new people after the election. So, that was, um, truly, as a candidate from Sheffield, thank you for being there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, we had put aside December 7th for our retreat. It turns out that MASC is going to be Liz LaFond and Glenn Pucher, leading a big part of this. They have a chartering course, course being given on that date. So, we are looking to see if we could do either the Saturday, the floor for the Saturday. As soon as we find out, I will immediately let you know. Um, we don't want to lose it, and we don't want to get on the coasters to any holidays. So, uh, those are the two major points that I wanted to make. And that is, so, thank you all for being there, and Sarah, no, we're there. So, it was good. And I turn it over to Dr. Rick with you from there.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to keep it brief, because you're going to hear from the administrative team later. Um, we're stretching for continuous improvement. Um, so, I just wanted to say, sort of the day, um, on the other side of the state, um, I was, uh, at a safety conference, uh, in Burlington, Mass, uh, very early this morning. Um, I was invited by our former guest speaker, Michelle Gay, from the Safe and Supportive Schools. Um, and so, she's spoken about a part of your district in the past. She invited, uh, people to come out and participate in, um, the safety conference, and it's more about, um, how do we move forward from where we currently are in school? So, there is a lot of great information, there is a lot of, um, grant funding opportunities. So, um, I already have things hitting my, uh, email inbox about resources that we can potentially tap into for, um, uh, continuing to work on improving, um, safety and security for, um, the future. So, that was really a nice event.
She was a new town.
She was a new town parent, yes, yes. Um, so, that was today, um, and, uh, also, I just wanted to highlight, we had a great, uh, experience, I think, uh, with the chair and vice chair, and myself attending the Leading Now, um, Joint Conference for School Committee Members and Superintendent. Um, and, uh, I think there were maybe five districts in their inaugural cohort of doing this work. Um, and I think everybody found it very beneficial to have that time together, um, and to be, um, strategizing about how best to, uh, have a collective, uh, commitment in response to the challenges of leading today's, um, environment. Uh, I'm super excited tomorrow, my superintendent advisory council starts. So, um, I start the day reading in New Harbor for my second read aloud, and then, um, I have superintendent advisory council, so I have tons of, um, ideas and thoughts, and I can't wait to see where the kids take it from there, so. That's all I'm going to say for now, and you'll hear from the rest of the team later.
So, I understand that they want to.
I'm not going to say it, I'm going to say it.
Uh, they agree. Thank you so much, and I will say, I'm sure Art, you will, secondly, it was a really wonderful experience being able to be there with other superintendents and chairless vice chair, and thank you for putting forward the idea that it should be more than just a superintendent. Because you, the more you hear how many people going through, and what we go through, and more, and more, and more. So, thank you. Okay. Julie?
I do not have a report tonight, because we're giving you a big report, isn't it?
Wonderful.
I'm not wonderful, but you have. Wonderful that some corporations.
Yes. All right.
I did, I had an effort to be efficient, I rolled my report into our presentation tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, so, let's start with Stephanie Brown's request for an overnight trip. Oh, that's you? Okay, thank you.
So, while Stephanie is not able to be here tonight, um, she had, uh, put in the overnight field trip, um, information, which everything's in the packet. Um, gave a detailed, um, agenda as to what the kids are going to be doing. Um, this is for the National Art Honor Society, so as you can see, there's, um, stops at the Museum of Modern Art, um, uh, some, um, visits to Grant's Tomb, the cathedral, the mausoleum, um, and then, the Wall of Art Gallery in Memphis Center for the Arts at Plumb University, um, are sort of the main spots, but, um, as you can see, she gave pretty much, um, hour-by-hour work. They're doing a trip, so, she's hoping for 14 students. Um, obviously, she's got herself listed on the field trip, knowing that she will still need a couple of the chaperones. Um, and based on who goes and who's interested, we'll then see if we have parents who are interested in going, or if we'll need another staff member to, to accompany on the trip. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
Um, the attentive says they're going to be getting on the metro rail at south, and off the metro rail at southeast. Why so far? Why not the SEAC?
Uh, I think they've found, uh, going on this trip over the years, it's easier. Uh, at that one, based on the times of the trains and things like that.
There's also guaranteed for no transfer, they can just stay on.
I, I guess that's probably part of it as well. Um, you know, I think, uh, we've, over the last 15 or 20 years, uh, anytime going to New York City and using the train, um, we've tried all different stops. And I would say, over the last probably 10 years, most of the time, we used that southeast one, so. Any other questions?
All right, in that case, I will take, um, motion for approval.
Salute.
And a second.
Second.
I have to give this, uh, Mr. Edlemont.
The other Mr. Edlemont. The senior, the senior.
Excuse?
I can just say that, that this has been a wonderful trip. Yeah. In, in the past, because she asked me to get a speaker for her, and the person appearing was just like so thrown away by our bids.
Yeah, we're really excited, we got it, um, you know, looking forward to it, so, thank you very much for.
All right, in that case, I have for the questions. Aside from the southeast question, all right, let's vote. Uh, Kim? Kim? We'll go back to Kim. Stephanie? Yes.
Yes.
Uh, we have the yes, okay. David?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. You've got unanimous approval there. Tell Stephanie we love that she shared this.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I guess. I will sit back down.
No, we're all, we're all, we're all, we're all coming.
We're all coming. I'm a little more comfortable sitting at my seat.
Well, I, I'm new to this, so the rest of them are pretty good. Okay, so, um, this is, uh, one of my favorite times of the year. Um, I'm not sure that you all agree with me, but, um, this is just the time that we get to kind of hear from the school committee on, um, any thoughts that they have on our strategy for continuous improvement. And, um, one of the things I like to highlight is, um, most people call these their district improvement plan, but we have never done that because we believe that they should always be a living, breathing document and something that can be changed as needed, as often as needed, and something that's actually usable and something we can point to. So we call it the Strategy for Continuous Improvement. Um, this is always live on our website, um, even if we make changes to it. Uh, it's always there. We've given it to everybody. We put it in the opening day packets, so people have had it for a long period of time. Um, we, it's, it's a cycle that we go through, just like everything else, to evaluate, um, the strategy. Um, and for us, it is our North Star. It starts with our vision that we collectively created when I came in 2017 to the district. Um, and that gives us our clear goals and our direction. So, um, we really haven't moved off of, uh, our four areas of concentration. And if I could remember, if it wasn't 4:00 AM, um, that I got up this morning, um, instructional leadership, management, operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, because that aligns with everything. It aligns with the evaluation process, um, the state. Um, and we, we align our vision, our expectations, and our strategies, our strategic objectives in that way. Um, so we, you know, go through, we try to engage as many stakeholders in the process throughout the year. We put together the, um, school committee agenda with, um, reports each month that reflect pieces of the work that we're doing, um, on the Strategy for Continuous Improvement. Really what we're looking for, your feedback and essential blessing tonight on are the action steps for this year. Um, we spend, uh, we did, what, four retreats this summer, I think? Four full-day retreats where we analyze, um, where we've been with our strategy. We look at the data. We look at the feedback that we receive throughout the year from all stakeholder groups across the district. And then we put together action steps for this year that we think will actually make the district, um, and the work for the students and student outcomes and faculty and staff move forward. So, um, sometimes they're the same. Sometimes they need a little tweak. Sometimes they're deleted. So, um, this is what we put in. And this isn't even everyone. We might add some more as new things come in. Like, we didn't expect United States of Readers. We didn't expect, um, some grant funding that we're going to get. So we'll be adding to these action steps as we move out throughout the year. But we want to start here. We're going to, um, we're going to go around and each person is going to talk about a few things, um, on, on the strategy. Probably won't cover everything and then we'll leave space for questions afterwards. Okay? So who's up first? Just want to make sure I follow this, okay?
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. Um, so I am going to talk about, um, our goal of reviewing and refining the MTSS process. MTSS stands for the Multi-Tierred System of Support for Students, um, which aligns very closely with my former job as special education teacher in the building. This work is really near and dear to my heart. The premises that every student can learn, um, and it's our job here at school to make sure we offer a multitude of ways that that can happen. Um, so this is a K through 12 initiative. That's why Paul's standing next to me. Um, so Paul takes care of it in the elementary school and I'm in charge on the secondary side. Um, again, the framework is there to integrate not only academic but behavioral, behavioral, excuse me, and social emotional learning. Um, it focuses to provide, like I said, um, equitable access to instruction and support for all students. Um, so there's four pillars and they are screening. We take assessment, kids take assessments and we take a look at those to identify who might need some additional support in the elementary. It might be some Title I. Um, then we monitor that progress and we meet, um, in a few weeks after we decide what we're going to do with the student. Um, and then we make sure that we're using good evidence-based, um, research when we're doing these interventions. Um, and usually what ends up happening is when you see this, it's illustrated in a triangle. And 80% of students are that Tier One where they're getting, um, every kid gets that instruction. About 15 or so percent in the next level of Tier Two kiddos that might need a little bit more in math. It could be, um, just with a certain concept that a kid isn't getting. You know, we might pull them aside and do a little extra work and make sure that gets to where, um, the kiddo needs for it to be. And then, um, about 5% of kids might move on to needing some more intense instruction. So that's basically, um, what MTSS, you know, this, um, in Massachusetts, we are required to do this. It is something that, um, back in the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, you know, this is required of us. So we have a team of folks. Cara D'Amico is helping us this year on both sides of the building. Yep, and, um, so there's, we have meetings weekly, um, with myself and her and a couple of teachers to talk about, just in general, how things are going. We supply teachers with a list of interventions for them to use on the Tier One level. Um, we're working on tweaking that right now. Um, and then we have other meetings specifically on kiddos. We had one today on an eighth grade student. We sit down and we look at some data and we talk about how we can help, um, the individual to, um, better access the school day with some support. Um, right now, we have a couple of plans going for kids that are behavioral and they're being monitored. We get together and talk about that, come up with a plan, meet again in a couple of weeks, see how it's going, tweak it any sort of way we need to, um, and take it from there. Um, we also have some academic interventions going. Before we jump right to a special education referral, we want to try a bunch of things. Um, so we have a kiddo that needs some extra help in math. So we're looking to try some things before we say that we're concerned and we would need some sort of full-blown evaluation. Um, so that's.
That's about it. I don't know, Paul, if there's anything to add.
No, I just specifically, our initiative is structured literacy in the elementary school. And this team is, um, in place to ensure we, when we have our wing boxes, which is what I need, and that's where we split up the kids into groups at whatever level they are in structured literacy. And we use this to refine that on a regular basis.
Somebody have any questions about any of that?
It's really, and everything wraps into this. You know, the social emotional, making sure every kiddo has someone in the building that they feel connected to. All of the things we do around attendance right now, um, also weigh into this. It's just really the whole reason that we're in the building, to make sure every kid is getting it. And, you know, we're very fortunate here to have such small class sizes and offer such wonderful, um, opportunities for kids to learn. But we still want to make sure we do the best job we possibly can. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, um, Chris and I will talk a little bit, uh, under Instructional Leadership. Uh, A2 was, uh, the Development of Innovative Practices and Programming and the ongoing expansion of the college program, internship program, uh, and pathways to graduation. Um, under the action steps, um, there's primarily five of them that really connect, um, to that. Um, and I'm going to talk a little bit about, um, some of the things we're doing this year in those. Um, so expanding the internship program with the community. Uh, we have a handful of new, um, internship locations for kids this year, which has been really nice. Part of, um, obviously with internships is just mentors. And so we're doing a lot, um, with, um, transcend about our community meetings and things like that. We've started compiling a list of mentors. Um, recently, um, our studio class, um, has found some mentors in, um, building and construction, in architecture. Um, are the first couple that they've had. Um, recently, we've had a, uh, college president, uh, agreed to, uh, mentor some of our kids, a handful of college professors. Um, and a lot of these come with, uh, informal conversations that, uh, some of us have with people and mentioning some of the things we do. And would you be willing to answer questions, things like that with, um, kids who are interested in those types of things. Um, so that's been great. Um, A4 talks about Walter Earl College, um, trying to give other kid the opportunity for 30 or more credits. Um, you know, we've, we've had a nice grouping of classes this year. Um, for the first semester, we have some on tap in the second semester. Um, we have kids doing all kinds of electives in, um, English, history, science. Uh, we have a film studies class going right now. Next semester, we're hoping, uh, to run, uh, anthropology class, um, as well as, um, a class geared towards economics, um, and, um, uh, design in art and also in, uh, graphic design in art and also in, um, uh, probability and statistics in math. So, um, kids have the opportunity to jump on in a whole lot of those classes. Um, and so we're, we're excited about that. Uh, we talk about, um, in the document, increasing the number of manual teachers. We have our, uh, second round of teachers going through it. Uh, there's five right now who are hoping to get, uh, their initial certification, um, which would, again, increase the number of classes we can offer. Um, under A5, we have Intro to Literature, HMHAGA Implementation with PD and Coaching. Our Intro, Into Literature is our, um, ELA curriculum in, uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. HMHAGA is, uh, the high school math curriculum. And so, um, we are in, um, year three of, uh, ELA in middle school. Um, really year one. We've been using HMHAGA in math for a couple of years, but this is really the first time we've gotten most of the math classes in that same program. Um, and so, uh, trying to do some PD, uh, trying to do some coaching, um, when, uh, those, um, platforms can provide the coaching, uh, bringing in some people. Uh, the coach was here for, um, Into, um, Reading, um, earlier this year already and plans to do some work within Into Literature with the middle school. Um, A7 is studio classes. I'm not going to talk about that yet because I'm going to come back and talk about that after under a different subheading. And then the last one is really, uh, A2, which really talks about, um, the employment market in Berkshire County, uh, but also, um, the pathways that we have, um, and trying to get industry-recognized credentials. Um, and obviously the, the innovation pathway of informational technology, manufacturing, and hopefully clean energy. I'm going to let Chris talk about those.
Okay. Uh, so Innovation Pathway for Manufacturing, um, first is foremost about our robotic program. Um, that money helps to support the robotics program that's having in the classroom as well as the stuff that happens after school. Um, right now, we have, um, four students taking the robotic engineering course that aren't even on the competitive team. They're just taking it of their own interest and they're just, they don't care to be on the competitive team or don't have the time after school but want to know a little bit more about robotics. So, um, you each got a, uh, pen, compliments of the, uh, robotics program. Uh, I left those with you there. We had those, so on the competitive side of things and sort of the after-school stuff, Tuesday night, um, our robotics team was up at the Flying Cloud Steam Night at Hancock or Shaker Village, uh, Hancock Shaker Village. And we were doing a demonstration of drones and robots and so on and so forth. So every parent that came by, well, here, take a pen, take a pen, take a pen. So, uh, we handed out a lot of pens, uh, so we had, but we had some left over. So I gave you guys some. So that's, uh, happening on the robotic side of things. Um, we have a bunch of students. We have six students that are currently engaged on the 3D printing side. Uh, the software manufacturer of the CAD program we use, Autodesk, is having a, uh, contest for what they call small architecture. So these kids are now designing small homes, uh, in 3D and they'll be printing them. Um, you know, little mo- scale models. Um, so Robbie Shore is in that class as well and he was saying, "I'm, I'm designing two houses for my classes this year." So, uh, so it dovetails into what the Burke Studio is doing, uh, in, in a sense. But so these kid, uh, the kids just, um, one group made the first pass that they're, uh, the bottom floor today with all the walls and stuff and it came out great. Um, so they're now printing the roof and they're printing the windows and they'll be snapping the windows in and stuff like that. So it's a contest in that the Autodesk company is, will hand take these submissions from students up through December 2nd and there's some real cash money involved. That's, that's their motivation. They can, they can win some money in this contest. So they're having a lot of fun with that. Um, and then, so finally then, the clean energy, uh, component to it, um, if you saw the article. So we, we've got the Planning Grant for Clean Energy Innovation Pathway. So what that means now is we can go through the process of, of trying to, um, put our, our, uh, two parts of the app, the real, the full application together. Part A was due today. We got that in today. Part B will be due, uh, probably in the early spring, um, late winter, early spring. Um, but the Planning Grant allows us to have some money to do exactly that. Sort of put pieces together for that application. Yeah, if we can get full implementation for the following year, we'll have another Innovation Pathway. We'll have some grant money coming in to support that program. Um, a lot of it will be around, again, it's clean energy. So kids will, my initial concept is that there'd be a class where they would study the production and storage of clean energy, renewable energy, uh, in combination with, we still want to make this a maker space, a hands-on, um, experience. So they will be working on an electric vehicle. Um, my initial thought was kind of like the way gym might, gym class might do one day in the classroom about health and one day in the gym doing an activity. We might have one day in the classroom learning about solar panels or wind turbines and then one day out in the garage working on the car. So, um, that kind of process might, uh, is sort of where I'm leaning towards right now. I just had a conversation like an hour ago with a student out in the foyer just before the meeting and he goes, "Mr. Thompson, did I hear that we have a, uh, go-kart racing team?" And I said, "Yeah, we, we did. We started that last year." And I said, "Here's, here's how this is going to go and if we get this grant money, might better expand that." And I told him, you know, how he might be a part of that. He's like, "Yeah, I'm definitely going to do that." Anyway, that's, that's where we're at.
Uh, just, uh, thank you, Chris. Just one other thing I, I should mention when it comes to the programming that we're doing. Um, our guidance department has put together some, um, nice field trips around some vocations that go along with, um, some of these, um, innovation pathways. And so they're taking a group of students, um, to, um, one of the, um, you know, paper mills. Um, there's another one that goes to, uh, a place in Pittsfield. The kids get a chance to walk the floor of the, of these factories, see how things work, see how the whole operation goes, which is exciting. Um, as well as we're planning on setting up some, um, small, um, sort of demonstrations in some other vocations, um, with, um, possibly, um, plumbers, electricians, things like that, um, that students can elect to be part of and, and have a half-hour, 45-minute presentation from those, uh, just as a way to round out some of the things that we're doing about, uh, kids' futures, um, which is exciting. Anybody have any questions for Chris or I? Sure.
Okay. Um, do you think that it might be an opportunity, um, for any of the school committee members who may want you to go and see a, um, 3D printing class and have students explain? Because when I did it, I, I was really blown away by how the students not only solved a problem, but they were able, remember a couple of students who were able to explain why something didn't work and what they had to do to rectify the situation. So it's totally enlightening.
I mean, that's, that's a lot of what those classes are about, robotics or 3D printing and all that. It's, uh, you know, you're engineering something and you're going to find trouble along the way that you have to either, you know, redesign, re-engineer, get around some, some capacity. But yeah, that, that would be fine. We can make that, make that happen.
Okay, so leave it to you to communicate on that?
Sure.
All right. And this idea really started with Beth. Um, and something that's happening now with the grant that Berkshire Community College received for careers in, um, really performing arts, tourism, all of that. And, um, they got money for work on their auditorium and they're really looking at behind the scenes. And they got money for work on their auditorium and they're really looking at behind the scenes and in front careers. Is there any possibility of us working with them, given all the arts that we do here? And they're linking up with Barrington Stage, Mahawi, you know, everything.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we'll look into it.
Thank you.
You know, there's opportunities around the county that we try to take advantage of.
Yeah, and that's what they're, because tourism is something where there really are good jobs in our county and Beth was the one who started me off looking at it after she brought up those, that as a possibility.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. You mentioned you had new internship possibilities. Could you elaborate more on that?
Um, well, I don't have the list in front of me. There's just some new opportunities for kids this year in the places that they chose to intern in. So different than maybe in past years. I mean, if that's interesting to you, I can, I can get you the list of the new ones, but I did not bring that with me.
I didn't share with him already because I'm going to surprise him right now, which he loves. But I think what we're going to try to do is really, we talked about it a little bit, but do like a mentor appreciation night and so that people will get to know who the mentors are, something like that as we move through. So you'll hear about that in detail. We just haven't gotten all the way there. We have a lot of moving pieces and I told him my next, my next mentor is the performing arts. He sees that talking right now. I don't know. I'm talking.
How are the mentorships, how are mentorships set up and how do you choose, how do you choose mentors?
In terms of the internships or in terms of overall?
Overall.
So overall, we have a list of people who have either offered internships to our students or have expressed interest in helping us. And so we have students that will utilize them at different times for different reasons. So in the case of the studio that's going, as we move forward, there's some people who have expressed interest over the years in different things like carpentry or architecture or things like that. And then we tap those, we tap into those. There's obviously, it's not an exhaustive list because it's the list that we've compiled over the years of people who have helped out.
So how do, how do people, if someone wants to be a mentor or provide mentorship within someone of the, someone of the industries of the region?
I mean, simply contacting one of us in the guidance department or me or Beth's office. I mean, that's, that's one of the ways we do it. We're also talking about through our relationship with Transcend, maybe a more formal way of doing that. And that, that remains to be seen, but hypothetically, right, we could have a section of our website where, where people who could just express interest of doing that. And sometimes it's based on, I had a meeting today with someone who had heard about the work we were doing in early college and wanted to come in and talk about their skillset and how they can help. So I mean, some of it happens like that as well.
Okay.
And again, you know, part of, part of the whole relationship we have with mentors is that, you know, you may get hit up right away or it might not be for two or three years down the road. It depends what students are interested in, how they want to go about it. And I would assume with what we're trying to do with the home construction design studio, that as more people hear about that, we're probably going to have a whole bunch of people who are willing to offer services to the kids to help them through that process.
Kids, I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
I also think it comes from with the studios we have where students are writing. So we're not, we're not handing them a list of matters necessarily. They're figuring that out on their own and doing research and thinking about that. The younger kids for sure, or students who are just looking for specific internship experiences would be a different ballgame where we should have that pool of resources available for them. So we have kind of a couple of different scenarios going.
Okay, thanks.
I think so.
Jesse, on the additional teachers that are being added to the early college program, how are they identified or are they coming to you guys as a team and letting you know that they're interested?
We put it out and ask people who's interested in doing that. We put it out two ways this year. Are you interested in going through the training of sort of what these early college classes attempt to do in terms of instructional practices? Or are you interested in possibly, you know, teaching your own early college class? And so we got a combination of both. Some people were just really interested in it and they were like, you know, I'm not looking to teach an early college class, but I really want to understand the pedagogy and things like that. There were other people who think they have classes that lend themselves nicely to an early college experience. When they go through the training, that's part of the training with Sons Rock and Bard is, you know, how to, they have to hand in a syllabus, they have to hand in a few lessons and then they vet those classes and say, yes, we can run this. Part of it also is what is transferable at the college level. And so sometimes we've had in the past, some really good idea for classes, but you know, we have to change the name of the class or we have to change sort of the syllabus and what the students are doing to fit more into an intro type class so that it's easily transferable. And that's part of the mass transfer with early college, like they want you to hit certain spots in certain classes so that every college who will accept these credits will say, it fits what we're doing. So we had this happen with our economics classes. You had to hit on certain things or frame it in a certain way in order to get it going. And again, like we would put it out to people, you know, there was a commitment on their part because some of the trainings they end up doing come outside the school day and sometimes people gave up a day in the summer to do some work. And so I think that factors into some people's decisions on getting involved. But we, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, if we can train every single person in this building, K through twelve, I think that would be awesome. Whether or not they actually teach early college classes, I think it would be great for everybody to have the training and those who want to do it, if we can figure out ways and schedules for someone who's maybe not teaching secondary to have the opportunity to do that, we will look at it. But it's really about the vast array of offerings we can give kids so that they all find classes that would be interesting to them. At the same time, that would fit what Sons Rock will vet as a, you know, doable college class.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll keep moving on. Better hit that. Awesome. So I'm just going to stay here and talk. So under instructional leadership, we have a couple others that we wanted to hit on. I talked a little bit about studio classes. We're really excited about the studio classes because right now we're looking at Transcend and other group buildings going on. And right now we're training a whole bunch of different teachers who are interested in this, not necessarily running the studio to the level that John Hamels running his at, but are using aspects of studio in their individual classes. So, you know, we have Connie Gott with culinary arts, Joe McSpirit with wellness and P E, James Sickett with some of his instructional technology classes. Michelle Razal as an English learner teacher is interested and so she was part of the training. Lindsay Brown in middle school science, Peter Lynch in in middle school social studies. And again, a lot of this is talking about sort of the way you design a studio, the way students come up with a problem in practice, the way students will conference with teachers back and forth, the way they come up with their community partners. And to Beth's point earlier, we know that we're going to have to do some work in middle school because the kids being younger, are they going to be able to quickly find a mentor they might need? They might need a little bit of help with that as opposed to a high school student who in John's studio class, it's basically, you know, guys, you need that, go find it. And the kids have been great about, about digging into it and finding the people they need to talk to. So that's one of the things we're doing, which I'm excited about, is training some other teachers involved. We're looking at the possibilities of what we could do with studio in the sense of, do they need to be specific like the one John's doing? We might try an open-ended one in the spring where basically kids come and whatever they want to look at, they can. And then the possibility of having some themes to go with it. One of the ones we're kicking around is entrepreneurship, which we do a class, we do an early college class around, but the idea of what it would be like as a studio where if a student wanted to design a product or create a business, could we do it under the studio model? So some pretty exciting stuff this year with studio and we'll see how far it takes us this year in terms of how many studios will run as complete semester classes. But I'm, I'm just excited that there's so many people interested in doing aspects of that in their individual classes right now. Any questions about studio? I know we've talked about it a lot, but.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. Just quickly, while you transitioned that, that passes around, this is the student's first pass at that house smiled, so you can see the first floor there. Right, don't get confused, they forgot the door on the back. They got to fix that.
It's working, Brad. So brevity is the central whip. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to jog your attention to A nine, which is all about how we have made efforts to improve science teaching and learning in elementary. In grades three through five, Claudine Mallory is now our science specialist. I knew she would always be a natural for this because she had an affinity for science projects, right? Science is the word we use for our methods of organizing curiosity. And this Mallory was already terrific at lighting that fire, but I needed to put her in a role where she had the ability to sustain a fire. And the way she's done it is through tons and tons of happy accidents, as Bob Ross liked to refer to them. And that is two things that will describe very well how much more science learnings and science hands-on projects is occurring in the elementary. First is, once a morning, I meet with my administrative assistant, we go to purchase requisitions. Well, this year, almost on a regular basis, I have a completely odd item that I've never seen before, whether it's mosquito, mildby, whether it's cockroaches, whether it's the life cycle of chickens. We are using new materials that are hands-on and that are engaging in grossing for the kids and that's a direct reflection of not my research, but her work. The next thing is that, and I'm sorry, Ed, how often we call it, but the amount of cleanups that are occurring in the science labs. Kids are breaking things, they are making things, they are tinkering. And I think what the next gen standards that came out now in two thousand and sixteen or often in thirteen, but Massachusetts adopted them in sixteen was that they wanted science to be more inquiry-based and more hands-on. And that's absolutely what's happening in all three buildings. And don't want to bore you with anything else. Other questions? Great, thank you.
So I'm going to be talking about A ten, which falls under instructional leadership and our strategic priority to provide all students with high-quality instructional materials. And those of you that have been around know that's been a big focus for the past three, four years of making sure that we have evidence-based, high-quality instructional materials in hands for all our teachers. And included in that, giving them the appropriate professional development to be able to implement those tools and know all the most current research-based best practices. This year, our focus is predominantly on E L A and structured literacy, which are those very early learning skills. And with the support from the Learning Acceleration Network that we have been grant-funded with for, this is our third year, they are working with us. We meet with them as an administrative team once a week where they coach us around what we should be seeing in the ideal structured literacy classroom, providing us with rubrics so that we can give really targeted feedback to the teachers on exactly how to adjust and improve their instruction. On top of that, they provide the professional development to our teachers that we offer every month through the school year. The coach that we're working with worked with our staff last year, so it's been very good this year to see the progress because we already have those relationships built with them. So that is it for that. Sandy, you are up.
Okay, while I was sitting here listening to everybody, I'm Sandy Hubbard, Director of Student Services, which covers a lot of departments and supports for our students. I came up with span the plan. So my little report here is going to span this whole plan. Okay, so there's these four strategic initiatives and then there's objectives underneath them. And some of them, if you're looking through here and you do a little light reading later on, or if you have done it already, you'll see they're really intertwined. Okay, so I'm also speaking on behalf of John Bruno, Dr. John Bruno, who couldn't be here tonight, so I'm presenting some of what he was going to talk about tonight. So under instructional leadership priority two, one of our action steps coincides with our recent tiered focus monitoring that I've spoken to you about, which happened through the Office of Language Acquisition with DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And if you look at A eight, we identified some sheltered English immersion practices, which is practices that support implementation and observations to provide feedback to our teachers regarding instructing our multilingual learners. So we identified those during the summer during our work that we did here as the admin team on our retreats and we identified vocabulary and labeling classroom items as a way to encourage and support language acquisition. And this has been reviewed with staff during meetings and admin is conducting walkthroughs to support that implementation. And if you look through here, you'll see that this also falls under management and operations, action step B one and priorities one and two. And I know I'm just throwing a lot out here, I can send this to you, but you can see how sheltered English immersion is all through this whole plan. Additionally, under management and operations, a district has established a schedule to conduct benchmark assessments, mental health screenings and the DESI mandated dyslexia screenings for grades K through three. All assessments are reviewed and interventions are put into place in the three tiers based on the M T S S that we talked about earlier with Julie and Paul. So we take the data that's gathered through those assessments, which are conducted two, three, four times a year, depending on what it is, and it's academic and social emotional learning that we're looking at. And we discuss in various groups what types of interventions might be beneficial in the tier one, two, three format. So curriculum department leaders along with data coordinators work with administration to analyze that available data to make real-time adjustments to instruction, which could be small group, whole group, or individualized interventions, which was under B four. Under B five, district meetings that include our local safety organizations such as our fire departments and police departments and school-based personnel work to ensure that practices including drills, services, procedures, et cetera, are in place to enforce, ensure the safety of our buildings and school community. And right off the hot process, our superintendent attended a training conference today and that's something that we're all working on on a regular basis. This includes mental health programs and interventions which have been supported through our safe and supportive schools grants in the past, the past three years. The district recently applied for a competitive social emotional learning and mental health grant, which would allow the district to continue to build the availability of supports. And just so you know, over the course of the past three years, we've added another full-time school psychologist. Last year, we had a school psychology intern. We have a mental health coordinator, we have a whole mental health team. And all of those folks work together to ensure that we have the availability of the resources to not only our school, our students, but also the entire school community and our staff. So we, and all of you also have supported all of those. I've talked about mental health over and over again. It's a huge priority and I think that these funds and resources have really guided our safety assessments and our work with our facilities and programs. We also, we just had another meeting tonight. We're really looking under family and community engagement, having task forces together and we're, I'm on one that's called improving attendance. And our goal is to address chronic absenteeism, which we do have a population of students and I don't have the data in front of me right now, but I have reported it before, a population of students who have been chronically absent. So tonight we had a great meeting where there were teachers, administrators, and we had a student attend, which was really terrific to get her perspective on why students are absent. And we're talking about getting out some surveys to gather some more data, why are kids having a hard time getting to school and what can we do to make some changes? You're hearing about this across the country, across the state for sure, and we're looking into what we can be doing and to make some changes and, you know, some of these are very basic. Two-way communication is incredibly important. We have a lot of things in place here that we're already doing, but we just want to see if there's other things that we can add in to improve attendance. That also includes in something that Charles and I had just discussed was the Southern Berkshire Collaborative Care Coalition that we're continuing to do with our local pediatrician's offices and, and agencies, which has been fantastic. It really allows for us to work together. It really allows for us to work together with our community organizations to identify supports for students and families. And that is continuing. Finally, under professional cultural priority three, the district has implemented a comprehensive professional development plan specifically for our education support professionals, our care professionals. That's largely being led by Dr. Bruno. He and I have worked together to identify some needs, along with the building-based administration, targeted goals that we can work on with a very specific professional development plan for our care professionals. It's designed to meet the various aspects of the school day and programs to identify the needs and meet the needs of students in a really inclusive manner across grade levels. So that's kind of the highlights, but like I said, Span the Plan. Any questions? Yes?
Under professional culture, D4, are you finding greater receptivity on the part of faculty and staff in this area?
D4?
D4, under professional culture.
Regarding, I think that, that was going to speak more about that one, that one wasn't on my head.
Oh, yes.
Are you finding with the increase in mental health services that a lot of the issues that we've had to, that the district has had to address post-COVID are starting to, are starting to settle out?
I wish I could say that was the case. They're changing. I would say that they're changing. But no, there are still very significant concerns that we're trying to address. It's not, I would say, as acute, but it's still something that we're addressing on a very regular basis. If I provided you with data right now on the number of referrals to special education that are predominantly focused on social-emotional or behavioral needs, I did this data at the end of the school year, it was 73%, that there was some concern related to social-emotional behavioral needs. So if you can just see like how, and that of course impacts academic.
Right, one that I think a lot, that they're seeing this across the country as well, that's it, but yeah, I was just curious.
That seems like where it's at, which is why that Southern Berkshire Collaborative Care Coordination is so vitally important, because we work with counselors and the pediatricians to really identify what supports might be best. And we're also realizing these are not all disabilities, right? This is our environment.
Right.
So things are changing pretty rapidly.
Have you seen anything in terms of, I don't know if it's statistical yet, but improvement as a result of early testing for dyslexia and?
Oh, yes, and actually, we were talking about providing that data, and I could have, that's part of the screening part that I was talking about.
Right.
The K through three, yes, we are, the early identification. And furthermore, the pre, the expansion of our pre-kindergarten program, where we're working on early literacy and literacy skills, has also been a factor in helping with the identification early and getting interventions in place before we get to the spot of this could be a disability.
Right.
That's great.
So anyone else?
I just wanna highlight that we're going at a much higher level because throughout the year, we're gonna do much deeper dives, so we'll actually have the data that you're looking for. We didn't do that tonight because we might still be here.
Right.
Next Thursday.
Twelve o'clock.
And so I just kinda want you to think about, we can hear, and I'm noting what you're interested in, and we'll make sure that we include that when we get to those specific reports, so.
Thank you. I was able to give you some of that because I just wrote one of these grants, and they asked for that data, so it's fresh in my mind, but more on to you. Thank you.
And we weren't hired to ask the questions.
Good evening, Ed Rager, Director of Buildings and Grounds, here to go over some of our capital budget. With our capital budget, we get $350,000 a year for improvements and new equipment and things like that for our budget. So with that money this year, some of the things that we did for improvements were, we did some flooring in the A-Wing, we did a lot of pelvic floor repairs again this year, parking lot pavement, installing a new playground and slide, stools for the science department, jockey pumps, flagpole, quite a few different things. And with that money, we're also taking a much more proactive approach to maintenance on the building as far as boilers, AC units, roof inspections, trying to get annual inspections done and everything, be just a little more proactive, replacing pumps and things, having a backup one sitting on site in case something breaks so that it doesn't slow us down or stop school from happening. Yeah, it's pretty, just where we're headed with the money, we just keep moving out and improving these things every year with this money we have. Blacktop and building groups just keep on moving. Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I have a general question, where are we with our marshmallow buses and the vans? What's that schedule of replacement go?
I would feel like that's a much more detailed discussion that we have it when we start to head towards budget planning in Buildings and Grounds, but I found we use that a lot. And we've talked about the idea that if we do end up with some of the remaining capital funding that we think we have, even though we've been diligently doing everything that we can on our list, we probably will request getting another one because we just use them all the time.
Yes, and they are, you know, starting, where we need to start thinking about that down the road, yes.
We'll give you facts and figures and all that.
Thank you. So I'm gonna talk about the standard space report card that we're working on. It's under family engagement because a standard space report card gives parents a better sense of what their kids actually know and what kind of progress they're making towards mastery of each standard. And with our purchasing of HQMI and having it all aligned to standards, it makes more sense for our report cards to reflect that. And why does it, it engages families because they know. And it can help with, I think it can help with attendance and kids' outcomes because then they'll know exactly where they stand, instead of, I'm a C student in math. No, I know this, I haven't learned this yet, I'm getting there, we didn't teach this yet. So, that's about it.
I know you're surprised, but I'm back. So I'm gonna just round out the end of this with our ongoing commitment to family and community engagement, communication in general. And I think we can see evidence, we've seen a lot of growth in how we are really a community school. We do a variety of ways to communicate on a regular basis. We are trying to be as responsive as we can. I try to hold stakeholder-level groups so that those groups can meet together. I have, the administrative team is holding task force meetings, students are meeting together, faculty and staff are meeting. We gave choice and voice to faculty and staff, just like we're giving to kids, about what kind of professional learning they'd like to do. And really trying to ensure that people feel valued. We try to give opportunities for distributive leadership if people wanna take on roles. We're always open to that, people come all the time with ideas, I'd like to start this, I'm thinking about that. And we try to support them in any way that we can. So I, I'm really proud, I think, of, you know, the other night I came out, eight o'clock, and a parent said, "Tamara, I just read your newsletter for Monday night." So, you know, I think people are really feeling connected, and people will just shoot me a note and say, "Hey, what about number four, you said this, when is that happening?" That's okay, because I at least, I feel like people are getting the information they need. And if there's a pattern of something, then we can make an adjustment on how best to reach our families and our community. So I think, I don't think, I think it speaks for itself. This year, we've had more attempts, I would like to do a little bit more. I was hoping that we would have had, I said this to Bonnie and Art when we were away, I kind of wanted to do the strategy and bring it almost to like a community retreat at the beginning of the year. We didn't make that, we did have faculty and staff weigh in this year more, we've had students weigh in more. We're gonna get there, we keep getting better at it every time. So I think the point of all of this is, we're not perfect, we're trying really hard, we're doing a lot of things, and we're seeing those improvements, we're seeing it come to fruition in the data, and we're gonna keep at it. But this is some of the things that we're doing, and we thought that these highlights would help you see that and then give us good ideas as to what you want more information on. Okay?
I have a couple, naturally. And there has been such a change in approach from when I first was on the school committee, and we would hear things about what we couldn't do because there wasn't money. And I know it's really, you guys, a lot, but the grants that you've gone for have made such a difference in what our students are able to have as part of their career in this district. And a major compliment, I know it's not easy, but it's.
Some of these people are masters, masters of the grant rating, they're.
But it's really appreciated. And the other thing is, it's clear that there's been a real response to the community's push for emphasis on looking at vocational education. And that's up there, you know, in what you presented, and it's appreciated. My third point is the emphasis on getting more and more of our staff involved in professional development and the fact that we've got people who were originally very reluctant looking at teaching early college, and now we've got six, seven or so certified and you're working. It really, it really makes a difference. So thank you for fighting the good fight. We know it's not easy.
Well, I also think in all fairness, people like to sit back and watch. They're not sure what we're talking about when we say some of those things. And so I think, you know, it's nice to give people a shot, let some people try it, you know, it's like anything else. I think Bill Daggett said, right, maybe take one-third who will try anything you ask them to, and then some who aren't quite sure, but they'll join in, some maybe you'll never get to try something. But the opportunity's there, and when and if people feel like it or wanna do some version of it, wonderful, you know. We're happy with that.
I also wanna say, following up on Bonnie's, on Bonnie's thing with the grants, I think the other thing that I see, obviously you can tell different perspective, I think that what the grants are providing in terms of tools for teachers to do what they want, to do what they can do, I think that, yes, the students are getting incredible, incredible opportunities. But I think that the grants are allowing the teachers to make those opportunities available. And I think that that's huge, that's really huge, so, yeah.
Obviously, we're the curriculum people. So, yeah, nice job, you guys, truly. This, I'm exceptionally proud of, right? But every single person can stand up and talk about it with a degree of passion, you can see that, the investment that, and that's, that's everybody on the staff, so I'm very proud of that.
So we love.
And how we could approve that method, or not. But we'll assume, I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Okay, second. Second there, so approval of adoption of the district's strategies for continuous improvement. All right, we have our motion in the second, any further discussion? Let's start with Paul. Yes?
Yes.
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 Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Could I? Thank you. All school committee members are invited to trunk or treat tomorrow at Sheffield Town Center by the hall. And next Wednesday, October 30th, school committee members are invited to Undermount, where all schools gathering, and Pilata author visit, so I'll put it in a way.
Oh, okay, any more?
Okay, great. Yes, you've never been to trunk or treat, it's wonderful. What's your favorite? I'll ask that, ah, right by town hall, Sheffield, and they come from all over. It's so far from only Sheffield, and the kids come in the cutest costumes. All right, we have an update?
Uh, no, we just updated as much as we possibly could, all of those topics, and then.
Okay, subcommittee reports, Sarah?
No updates.
Okay, can you read the relations, Nancy?
Speaking of newsletter, ninety-nine now.
Okay.
Well, one final statement, so articles are still being submitted, but I'm working with Curator Donna to, it's fine, this is the timing, because it didn't go out until Ray Graham's, the 30th of last year, so we're on that schedule.
So we're going.
We're still doing some add-in, yes, it'll be out of four actions for sure.
Okay, and I have to add one sentence to my article.
Okay.
Just one?
Better do it.
I do, yeah.
Or I cut it off, I'm gonna drop your submission.
Okay, policy, Paul's. Not here, but we definitely are working with MASC for a complete revision where needed on our policy, kind of. Personnel and negotiations, we will shortly be meeting to establish ground rules. Buildings, grounds, and technology, Art?
Haven't met.
But still, I, okay. Kim, anything on the superintendent evaluation side?
We are, we are looking to schedule a meeting.
Okay, great. Executive Minutes review, okay, warrants, I don't, that's, you've been doing it. Curriculum, we haven't met since the last time. MASC, Carl will be there. Do you have anything on any of the liaisons, Eagle Fund, liaison to early childhood?
Not yet.
To the childcare program, no. And community health advisory, Kim, I'm assuming they haven't met. All right, and the regional agreement review subcommittee, no. We're gonna do that once we have elections, okay. Future agenda items. So we will, anybody have anything that they want to add for us to consider before the next? Okay. Oh my God, looking for time, anyone want? Make the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Vote, and let's start with Stephanie?
Yes.
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 Okay.
And Kim? Yes.
And before I say yes to that, Kim, will you give us an update on the wonderful news from track and field? Can you hear me?
No. No, she's gone.
She's gone.
Okay, Beth, do you wanna give an update on it?
Um, well, I have, from her, um, let's see, we have, um, I don't wanna say names, you want me to say names now?
No, but you.
Ken, do you wanna do it? Do you wanna say their names?
Yeah.
Okay, she's, she's good. So we had, out of 148 competitors in the boys, we had Jay placed ninth. Malika was 28th, and Brendan was 39th, so the boys. And out of the girls, out of 135 runners, Bailey was 80th, and Daisy was 79th. So this was the 2024 Western Mass Middle School Invitational. So we should be very proud of our team.
Yes, and our coach, Carl, we haven't met. So, one's all, we're married, of course.
Proud of all of our coaches and our players.
Exactly, yes, of course.
Yes.
Okay, and now our vote, and now a yes to adjourn.
Okay, Sarah, you're holding tight. Please take a sandwich or a sandwich.